I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Salisbury.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Cybert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wigginton.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
All the aldermen present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Warner.
Here.
Chief Clay. Chief Boar.
Here.
Ken Vaughn. Bruce Carlyle. Jamie Maitred.
Here.
Tim Greenwood.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman. Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Bob Sabo.
Here.
And Debbie Melville.
Here.
Okay, I know that Ken Vaughn has requested off tonight. I think he had a pretty major anniversary today. And Chief Clay, Assistant Chief Parker is here on his behalf. And Mike Parks is here for Chuck, who's on vacation today. I'm not sure about Leander. So he may be strolling in, or maybe I missed a message because Aaron was also off sick today. So maybe I just didn't get that message. At this time, I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular meeting October 17, 2016. Just real quickly, remember that we're being audio and videotaped so that when you all are called upon, we'll be in a little bit open public participation, that you come up to the microphone after your call on and speak into the microphone. Give your name, about two to three minutes to the topic of preferably something that's Belleville-related. And then as far as the evacuation procedures, if we would have to leave this building because of smoke or fire, there's several exits, the stairs, many, most of us came in over here. We just ask that you carefully go outside. And then if you would go in the front of the auditorium and meet so that we can kind of talk to each other and say, hey, so-and-so was sitting next to me, want to make sure they're not in the building. If we had a storm, we would ask that you make your way to the basement and find an inner hallway or bathroom where there's none to few windows for the safest place during that kind of threat. So at this time, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearing this evening, and I will open up public participation. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Michael Hecker. I just want to speak-
Raise the microphone, but Mike-
I just want to speak in opposition to the request for a raise in there tonight's agenda in saying that we don't seem to have a problem of multiple people wanting to run for these elected positions so that pay is not an issue for somebody. And maybe as a compromise, rather than a fixed increase, tie it to the Consumer Price Index and let it just go with that so that it'll be adjusted for inflation, but not necessarily just an increase for the sake of increasing it. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation, and we're going to move on now. Is anyone here this evening from the Extra Mile Committee? Okay, good. Sorry to put it that way, but I walked off without the proclamation. This is something that they asked us to read. It's about, it's actually, I think, a national program that deals with challenging all of us, which really has not been a problem in Belleville, to encourage volunteerism. I will bring this at the next meeting. I still think it's important. I didn't think there would be someone here, but once again, with Aaron out today, I walked off without it. So I apologize for that. But moving along to the next item, I'd like to ask, I think there's a lot of smiles out there. I happen to be in Chicago. I hated it the weekend of our first marathon, but it was a commitment I had made and might run into again. But being on the Illinois Municipal League Board of Directors, but this marathon, I met with them numerous times in planning it. There was a lot of work that went into it by a lot of people. I want to thank the city staff for stepping up to the plate because I know that they pitched in well to help everybody. But I want to call this group forward. I think they have a presentation and some comments. I think, I understand Sarah and Mike are going to come forward, is that correct? If you'd come forward and introduce yourselves and just share whatever's on your mind because we think it was great. It was a-
Thank you. We want to thank the city so much for your support of the marathon, all the way from the city council's office, Mayor Eckert, the Belleville Parks and Recreation Department, the Streets Department, and the Police Department. Individually, we'd like to thank Mayor Eckert for your leadership in supporting this event, not only for bringing the first marathon to Belleville, but the first marathon in the Metro East. Jason Poole, who provided tremendous logistical and organizational support. Jim Schneider, who provided invaluable guidance to make this a really good event. And Sergeant Craig Stafford from the Belleville Police Department, who made sure this was a safe event, not only for the runners, but for the participants and the hundreds of volunteers we had. And we are extremely happy to present the Belleville Parks and Recreation Department with a check for $4,500.
Why don't we get Debbie and Jason in? This, Debbie, Debbie Belleville's the director, and Jason Poole's the assistant director. And if you guys would like to present that check to the two of them, they would be the ones who would be the most excited to-
I'm a lot, Jason. Can you handle work with them?
Turn around.
Very nice. Now, I also understand you also support this one to backstoppers.
Yes, we'll also present a check for $1,500 to backstoppers. And we truly couldn't have done this without the city's support. So thank you. They need to applaud you, ma'am.
Did you get a picture of him? No, I didn't know. We thought we could, hold that check up there again. We don't want to cut the news, I'm going to cut off.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I always thank the major sponsors. Sarah's looking taller than I even saw. Which was HSHS, merch distributing, and Chironet Carrot Fry. And we also have Chironet, Underwood Carrot Fry. We have a special gift from the mayor.
Wow. You know, I couldn't, even if I'd been in-
How do you get your size?
Even if I wouldn't have been in town this year, I couldn't go do anything, even walk, I couldn't. The Nardale Marathon, we got Main Street Marathon. Well, I'm going to tell you what, the people throughout, especially in the West End, I know Roger and I were sitting one morning in the West End, and several people came up to us from Signal Hill and said, you're going to do it again, aren't you? We just loved it. This is very nice, very nice. Well, this will go in my office.
Thank you.
I just want to say to you, it was, when you came to me, we talked, it's a major undertaking. And when you mentioned Jim Schneider, who we're going to recognize here in just a few minutes, and Jim probably have commented to that, not too many years ago, we had a handful of fitness events. And now we're up close to 30, 30-some, and the ultimate was to accomplish a marathon. And I understand that you not only accomplished it, you accomplished it in a very tasteful, safe, and very fashionable way that I think is going to grow. So I applaud you. I think it's good for Belleville. There was, there's always a lot involved. A lot of people tend to say, oh, I don't know if we can do that. But I think the attitude was a can-do from the beginning from everybody. And apparently went dynamite, and that was good for Belleville. We thank you. So thanks so much. So you look forward to playing this? We've already approved the date. I think it was last meeting. So, very good. Thank you so much. And thanks for, I don't know where I'm going, Main Street or Marathon? Okay. The next one's kind of a bittersweet presentation. I'm going to step out here and ask our friend Jim Schneider to come forward. Within the first few months of being mayor, in 2005, I knew that I was looking for a human resource director. And as Jim would often talk about looking outside the box, I immediately started thinking about people who could not only take on HR challenges, but help with training, development, and a host of other things. So when we sat and talked a couple of times, we were, actually, we knew each other in high school, but not, I was not a runner, you know? I played on the football team, basketball, I didn't do all that. And I, then I went to work and quit sports, but he was a runner. I couldn't keep up with Jim. But in early 90s, when we started Franklin Neighborhood Association, Jim helped us and did some team building with young people and did a lot of different programs and kept coming back and helping his services from the YMCA, the Life Adventures. So that's really how I got to know Jim in depth. And we got to share some stories, philosophies, and feelings about how we believed we saw Belleville growing in the future with neighborhood programs. And really what boils down to is today, it's community development. So, and then, there was a period of time after I hired Jim, and he was approved by this council, I believe it was on July 5th of 2005. He immediately took over as HR director. Short time thereafter, Gary Hoffinger announced he was retiring. And so Jim stepped in kind of as an overseer of parks with his experience from many years in the Y. Gave Debbie a chance to really step up from programming into management and start to understand some of the other aspects of the whole picture. And within a few years, she became the director. And then Jim and I got to, I guess, really go back to the original conversation and shift gears to also community development. And that's been because of many of you. It's been because Eric Schuster and Anissa and many volunteer agencies. Jim, we didn't put on the plaque, we didn't squeeze in Parks and Rec Director because it got to the point, I needed a bigger plaque. But here's what we got to present to you tonight. Presented to James Schneider in grateful appreciation for 11 years of dedicated service to the city of Belleville while serving as Director of Human Resources and Community Development, 2005 to 2016. We know that you're not leaving the community. We've had many talks about your desire to still be involved in things like guiding people with races and using his expertise and community development and a host of things. But in your mind, we know that Director of Parks also should be in here. I just got to the point where the guy who did the plaque said, Mayor, how much more can I say? I'm going to make it really little. And I said, I think, I think he'll understand. It'll be okay. I want to present this on behalf of the city and tell you thank you because Jim was the guy who, with Peggy, his loyal assistant, and so many others, we got nine unions. So they were, he was at the forefront, and our city attorney was right there, and myself and department heads, but to negotiate nine contracts every so many years, I think in the past year we did all nine. So he's leaving at a time when they're in good shape. We don't have, we don't have union contracts open tomorrow. And we've come through some constant change adjustment. Jim's done a lot of training, customer service. I told Jim when I first hired him, I said, you know, there's several departments in all of us. We need to remember that the taxpayers are the customers and that we need to- So he had expertise in training and helped us with a lot of training. So Jim, I just say from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and I'll turn it over to you, whatever you want to say. Thank you.
I didn't know I was going to have to say anything. So how about this? I have found that there's a lot of amazing people in this community. People who really care, people who are really trying hard, people who are doing a great job making a difference in our schools, in our churches, in our community service organizations. People in our neighborhoods, people sitting right there, especially people sitting back over there and sitting behind me. And so I think there is no limit as to how much, how we can create in this community as long as we're working together rather than against each other. And I feel incredibly privileged to serve the community that I grew up in, especially working with the colleagues that I have. Nobody's ever done anything by themselves. Thanks.
I forgot to say also that besides everything else that was thrown at him, occasionally I'd call him to go give a speech that I could make or welcome or something, and it was another gift he had and he would gladly do. So for that, I also thank you, Jim, because many times you bailed me out to last minute. This time, we have on the agenda a presentation by Economic Development Resources on the Shopland Plaza Business District Eligibility Study. And Daniel, right?
Yes, sir.
If you want to come forward, I guess if you, if everybody can see it from there, you want to pull, however you want to slide it on a little bit.
Yeah, wherever you'd like it.
So the aldermen can see it, then we can turn it, if the folks have to have a question.
Sure.
But the main thing is that they understand what they're reporting on. Play it on.
That'd be good for everybody.
You can take that microphone free if you want.
Okay, yeah, I might need that. So, thank you, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. We're here to talk about the proposed Shopland Business District. This is located on the west end of the city, on West Main Street at the intersection of West Main and Foley Drive. It's comprised of six parcels, constitutes seven acres of the city. And it contains the Ace Hardware Store located in the main building of the shopping plaza, as well as the Jefferson's Restaurant located on the same parcel. The remainder of the district comprises public right-of-way, and the shopping center contains eight units. 16,000 square feet of the 28,000 square feet in the shopping plaza have become vacant, and they have remained, mostly vacant throughout the past years. They'd had a few tenants that were in for maybe a month or so longer. But nothing has been able to successfully take root in the remainder of the shopping plaza. On the map, I'd like to point out at this point, the parcelization that you see here, there are several different parcels, six as I mentioned. They really don't even align with the two primary structures that exist. You have two primary structures on one parcel, and then you have some sliver parcels down here that are kind of left over from whatever may have been there in place before. As we know, I think we've done a few business districts in Belleville. The area needs to be found as a blighted area according to the business district law. And in order for us to make that determination, we do a number of things. We go out on site with members of our firm, as well as with members of the city staff. In this instance, we had the Building Department, the Wastewater Department, the Fire Department, as well as the property owner, and members of the Economic Development and Planning and Zoning Departments as well. We went through each building. We were even on the roof of the shopping center. And we were allowed access inside the interior spaces of both the restaurant and the shopping plaza. In the, in the study, you'll see on pages two through seven, the documentation of our findings. These included a number of factors, a couple that I would like to point out again on the map. The first being the inadequate street layout of the area. The parcelization dictates that traffic entering and exiting the shopping plaza must travel through a privately owned parcel along West Main Street. There's two entrances and exits here. One of them is actually on the abutting property, which is the bank here. The other entrance and exit again is on Foley Drive, which again, you have to travel through an abutting parcel, as well as here, you're traveling through two other privately owned parcels. So there really is an inadequate street layout as far as Foley Drive intersection and the West Main Street curb cuts. There was also a number of unsanitary or unsafe conditions found within both the buildings, as well as deterioration of site improvements. And then again, once, once again, the improper subdivision and obsolete plating. These parcels are not of proper size for adequate development with today's standards. So with those combination of factors on site, they have created an economic liability for the city, a social liability, and they also constitute an economic underutilization of the area. So consequently, business district law allows us to find that the area does qualify as a blighted area and is eligible, eligible, excuse me, to be a business district. That's pretty much what I have, if anybody-
Any questions for Daniel? This will be brought up a little bit later on in the meeting, coming from Economic Development, a recommendation to committee. We've had some other presentations. This is not the first time, and I don't think any of us are unfamiliar with the Shopland Plaza. So Daniel, we thank you, and he's here tonight on behalf of Gene Narber. So we will bring this back up as we get going in the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we move on. Turn the page to number- Number seven, we go on to eight, approve all the minutes. Thank you, folks. Council meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2013. Much pleasure. Hear motion? Motion by Alderman Pusa, second alderman Bittner, to accept and file. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and dispersments. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $2,123,983.44 and the payroll of $899,778.44. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Wigginton. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a treasurer's report of September 16, and we have a statement of cash and investment report. Can I ask for a motion to accept and file both of them together? Motion by Alderman Elmore, do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor of accepting those two reports and filing them for audit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Oral reports. Economic Development, Alderman Consilla.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Shopland Plaza Business District Eligibility Study and place it on file for public inspection.
Is there a, okay. Okay, motion, second. Motion by Consilla, second by Randall. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Economic Development Resources to complete the Shopland Business District plan.
Second. Motion by Consilla, second by Randall to authorize EDR, our Economic Development Committee, our department, to complete the Shopland Business District plan. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Finance Committee Alderman Salisbury.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, make a motion to approve waiving of approximately $220 of rezoning fees for 1020 Freeburg Avenue.
Motion by Alderman Salisbury, second by Alderman Cybert. Discussion. Why, okay, this is the property, and this, I forget, some of you weren't at the finance meeting. We, we're still in the process of doing the potential roundabout project on Freeburg Avenue. And this gentleman has been very good working with the engineers, already signing off on granting us for no charge construction easements and some easements, right, Anissa?
Through his front yard, yes.
Through his front yard. And the only thing he asked in return is that he would like to change his zoning, which really, we all agree in staff, it makes sense. And he asked that we would waive the fees, and we thought that was a fair, pretty fair consideration because he's not, you know, negotiating with us for any of the easements. Motion by Alderman Galetti, second. By Alderman Cybert, do I hear discussions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
Yeah.
Are they making a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I turned away there. Motion came from, who made the second?
I-
Cybert.
Cybert did.
Okay, that was just some questions, and we- Any further comments or questions pertaining that? I apologize. Trying to move it along, I know, and I was trying to help. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further comments or questions, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. This time, I'd ask for a motion to approve continuing with Southside Park Grant improvements now that the grant has been reinstated by the Illinois, State of Illinois, including approval of updated contract with Schaefer-Meyer Seed Sod Division One, Inc. Motion by Salisbury, second by Hazel. Discussion on this. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I'm motion to accept the audit reports for the fiscal year April 30 of 2016, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Sillsby, second by Cybert, discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries, at this time we'd ask from Dr. Sillsby.
Motion to approve resolution allowing employees to buy back military service credit with the IMRF, so moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Sillsby, second by Alderman Cybert, any discussion on this? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries, Dr. Sillsby?
Make a motion to approve increasing the mayor's, city clerk, and city treasurer's salaries by 2% effective 5/1/17, 2% 5/1/18, 2% 5/1/19, and 2% 5/1/20, so moved.
In motion by Sillsby, second by Cybert, discussion?
I'd like to make some comments.
Okay.
One is, I'm the one that brought this forward. We have now completed all of the contracts with all the city employees, if I'm understanding. Plus, it's been four years since the top elected officials have received a raise. If we don't do something now, that's eight years. Because you can't do it in the middle of the term, you have to do it at the beginning of the term. I think that is... Not good business on our part. You know, we appreciate the people and the work that they do. We see more hours in what the public sees of what they do, but I think that's important. The other thing is that we have many employees in the city that make more than these gentlemen. Having been in that situation, I think that we ought to honor them by doing that at this point. So that's why I brought it up, and why I'm supporting this motion.
So we have a motion, we have a second, any other comment? Call for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries. It was 15 to 1, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just to note that. Okay, we go on to Master Sur, Alderman Dillman.
On behalf of the Master Sur Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve change order to the LTCP Phase 3 project. Before the meeting tonight, I handed out these to the aldermen and the front table. There's a change on the change order list itself. There is a fee on there of $13,000 for restocking fee for some of the pipe we're not getting used. We swapped out the pipes, fit the needs, done. And that's off the market now. So anyway, what we decided in our committee meeting, it's down $13,000 now.
So we have a motion, and do we have a second to take it? Second was who, Alderman Wigington, discussion, further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries, Alderman Dillman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order on South 11th Street, Sur's mention.
Make a motion, Alderman Dillman, do I hear a second? Second, Alderman Tyler, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.